Now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to our public hearing for the fiscal year 21 grant. We're hoping that the grant application will be announced in the coming months. This is also a public hearing for our existing years fiscal year 18 through 20 and the CDBG CV awards. Currently on the call, we have myself, CDBG Coordinator Peg Dean, and we have Heather Blakely, the DPW Director. I have no other attendees at this public hearing, unfortunately. I had, I received no comments before the request to receive comments by one o'clock, January 6th. I did a diligent effort of, or I made a diligent effort of posting this public hearing more conspicuously than I have in the past. At the recommendation of Town Councilor Gusteves, I posted it in the Crane to Main target area. I also got it over to Vocero Hispanio to try to post. All those postings were in both English and Spanish. We also published in the TNG two weeks in a row, December 21st and December 28th. And we posted in the town hall and on our communities, whatever sites they, they might have. So we continue to try to reach out to get input on these public hearings. But unfortunately, we don't seem to get the attendance that I would hope for. We're going to keep trying to improve that. The purpose of these hearings is to obtain citizen comments on the potential projects that we're pursuing and the outcomes and effectiveness of existing programs that are underway and how they could be improved in the future. So we'll just get right into it. For our slideshow here, the fiscal year 21, as I said, we're anticipating that the announcements will be made, that the applications are available for the fiscal year 21, which would then be typically awarded by the middle to end of the calendar 21 year. We typically go into construction for bigger infrastructure projects that, that winter into that spring, summer of the next year. And then the, the grants close, it's usually an 18 month cycle, July of that fiscal year until the, or of that calendar year until December of the following year. All projects have to meet the CDBG objectives of either benefiting low and moderate income persons in our community or trying to prevent slum and blight or responding to urgent needs. Urgent needs are typically not an eligible criteria anymore or rarely ever used. We typically invest in, in the past, housing rehab and today, infrastructure. We on average get $825,000 in that 18 month grant cycle. New as of this year, this past year, we're only allowed three activities per grant cycle that are from the eligible list of activities to the right there. Outside of the activities, up to 27% can be used for administration and program delivery to complement the activities and projects. So we do use money towards administration to be able to staff this office with a CDBG coordinator and then a complimentary CDBG admin assistant. We also spend on program delivery in some years to be able to complement the infrastructure projects. New to this public hearing, we're looking at the urban renewal plan to be able to uncover any opportunities to consider projects related to the tip project that's scheduled right now for fiscal year 24. Correct me if I'm wrong, Heather. And projects that would be related to the rail trail that qualify for CDBG funding. Is that right, Heather?
I believe that is correct. That tip, that FY 24 is also kind of movable depending on what other projects on the tip do not, you know, in other parts of the state. So we can get moved around based on readiness and other issues, but right now I believe it's 24.
Okay, and so if we were to pursue a tip related project in the fiscal year 21 application, we could get that work done in the spring of 22, summer of 22. So hopefully that would line up well. Should the town want to propose such projects, we'll have a more in-depth public hearing for input from the town on the subject. I highlighted over to the right under eligible activities, what we're right now considering minus the, the tip slash rail trail urban renewal plan projects. So you see that housing other, that's our code enforcement position. That seems like a for sure project for this coming application. But what's more on the table are potential playgrounds, parks, project and water specifically. If we are to do a water project, which one will we choose? So getting more in, in detail, as said, we think we'll go ahead with the, the code enforcement. Seems like everyone's in favor of these proactive and reactive code enforcement officers that are helping to improve our neighborhoods. And then the remainder of money on the table, if I was to subtract out the administration, will be about $540,000. So after that 4D housing and our administration costs, we have about $540,000 remaining. How to spend that money? We could consider, for instance, the parks playground funds or spending our money on parks and playgrounds. What we're specifically discussing is McCann Fields lighting and security improvements. And then within the infrastructure, 6F infrastructure, we're looking at a water project. And so if we were to just ballpark some figures, you know, if we wanted to spend the bulk of our grant on this, on the infrastructure, we could consider the three projects, Cross Street, River Street and Crane Street. And we were previously considering Hamilton. Why we were considering these three projects? Well, we're aiming to do a water upgrade in the Crane to Main target area, our newest target area. And we are trying to do the analysis of which one would be the most appropriate for this coming CDBG application. I see that Counselor Adams has joined us. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Peg. I'm sorry I'm late. Just came back from another meeting.
That's okay. This is a quiet meeting. It's just me and Heather, unfortunately, but we'll hope that people might do this in the future. Yeah. So the only thing new, Dave, that came up in this public hearing is, new to the public hearing, we're looking at the urban renewal plan. There are opportunities to consider projects related to the tip project, which is scheduled for 2024, or projects related to the potential rail trail that qualify for CDBG funding. Should the town want to propose these projects, we'll have a more in-depth public hearing for input from the future, from the town on the subject in the future. But I, because the announcements for the application haven't been made yet, there's still time for planning here. And so, you know, we don't want to miss any potential opportunities that might be of more interest to the town. So there's the, you know, parks, playgrounds, McCann Fields, lighting and security. There's the water projects. There's the potential for a feasibility study for a transfer station, but that may end up being too late down the line of planning. And then there's what I had said, maybe something that's inside the urban renewal plan that was never followed through on. If you look at the map of the target area here, it's important to understand our funding, how it works. It, from an outsider's perspective, it might seem obvious to say, go, if we were to, if we were to consider the, not Cross Street, but River and Crane for upgrades. And we look at that target area. If you look at where Crane comes in, it's right here. And it goes up to River. And we would love to be able to keep going and spending money to finish River Street. However, as you see from the, the blue to the purple, those are two different target areas. They qualify under two different objectives, national objectives in the grant. And so if we were to fund both, if we were to fund River Street past the blue into the purple, those would suddenly become two projects. And again, we're only allowed three projects total. The Crane to Main target area in blue is the low to moderate income target area. The purple is Globe Village, which qualifies as slum blight. Slum blight is not permitted to do underground with CDBG funding. It has to be surface level slum blight improvements. And so that doesn't even, you know, that potentially couldn't work for the, for the water upgrades on River Crane. And then if you're looking at the, if you're looking at the Cross Street, this street, so you know, that's another great candidate. And the Hamilton Street was also another great candidate. However, we've taken Hamilton off the table because some of the Hamilton project will be addressed during the future transportation improvement project or the tip. And the DPW will look to schedule that after the tip is completed. Looking at projected cost estimates, the Crane to River, and these were incredibly high level cost estimates, which Heather, you can speak more to. But we have a very high level cost estimate for Crane and River, very high level cost estimate for Cross and very high level cost estimate for Hamilton. And is, we consider the amount of CDBG funding we're investing. You know, if we're talking about $400,000. The Crane and River seems like a good use of funds, but I'll let Heather get more into that. I just want to also thank Counselor, oh Chairman Jovan, thank you for being here. I see that you've joined us. I see potentially is that Town Manager Michael McCall, very good. Thank you for being here. And Counselor Dow, thank you for being here also. Excellent. All right, so I'll let you.
We just came from a Board of Health meeting, so.
Oh, very good. Okay. Well, thank you for joining. It's a quiet meeting, unfortunately, or quiet public hearing, unfortunately. What I had mentioned that was new to this public hearing that hasn't been mentioned before is because the 21 application hasn't been announced, we don't want to lose any opportunities to consider other potential projects that, that the town may want to look at. For instance, all urban renewal plan projects within our redevelopment authority's purview are eligible for CDBG funding. And so what I brought up recently was if the town was interested in considering any of those projects related to the tip or related to the, the rail trail, their CDBG funding is, is eligible for that. So if we do consider that for, for this round, we'll have another public hearing to, to talk more in depth about it. And I will let Heather just give a, an overview of potential water upgrade projects.
Good evening. So Peg has kind of presented the three different locations that we were looking for in this Crane to Main upgrade area. We looked at doing cost, very high level conceptual cost estimates based on some numbers that we've used in the past so that we have a pretty good comfort with them, that they gave us enough of a cushion and we're happy with kind of the conceptual numbers when we do bid a project that become in pretty reasonable. And because we don't have all the details of the project yet, we can make some higher level cost estimates, but get a good idea of what we're doing. So there were three different options that we were looking at previously, Crane and River Street. And this would be from Hamilton Street to the bridge. That estimate came in, and this includes upgrading the water main because the projects that we're looking at doing are water related projects, which allow us to do road improvement upgrades at the same time. So when we're touching the road because of the water main, we get to do those road improvements. When we look to do road improvements, it's a little bit trickier with the funding. It's a lot easier, Peg can explain that more, to demonstrate that we're helping people in the area, in the low to moderate income area with a water upgrade project. So these are water main replacement projects, also including sidewalks, catch basin, drainage improvements, the milling and reclaiming, and then, then the new asphalt. So that location from Hamilton to the bridge, I did some hard, you know, some estimating, counting how many catch basins we had there, estimating how many new drainage manholes we might need and put it all into our, the spreadsheet that we've been using. And that comes out to 1.62 million. And that does not include, I will give this caveat, did in my email to Peg too, is not include any preliminary engineering, any of the design engineering on it, and it doesn't include any sewer upgrades. This area in particular, I know needs sewer upgrades. We already know of some of the things. I did give her some numbers. So there will be additional funding that is needed from the sewer. But obviously that 1.1, 1.2 million can't be funded off from CDBG either. So we will be looking to leverage water and Chapter 90 fund, potentially some stormwater funding. All those different funding sources combined to be able to do this project. But it is a million dollar project for that section of road. The, I don't know if Peg can hear me. If she goes to the Cross Street, which was another location that we were looking at. There we go. That one comes in closer to a million. It's a little bit shorter of a, of a road. It's a little bit shorter for section, so it's actually a little bit obviously cheaper to do. But again, this didn't conclude the engineering. You're probably looking at another 100,000 and I would use another 100,000 for sewer contingencies. So overall, when you look at the project, again, it's not going to be only a CDBG project because by the time we're done with replacing the sidewalks on both sides and replacing the catch basins and replacing all of the other associated work that has to go in there before we redo this road, we're still looking at a million dollar project. If we go to Hamilton Street. As you, as we're all aware, Hamilton Street is much longer. I estimated from Main to Edwards, knowing that we do have the tip project coming up and not wanting to interfere with what's going to happen there because there will be some grade changes and other things happening. I did put the total project cost on the bottom there. We're almost approaching 3 million there, once we do engineering and sewer contingencies. You know, there is, I definitely want to leverage our money as much as possible. I know all three of these streets are in dire need for these improvements. It's not that they're not. It's, I don't have a opinion one way or another, which one should be done. They all have their benefits and their pluses and minuses. I do think the Hamilton Street project is too much money at this point to do without knowing that we're going to have other funding sources to help cover it. But I also don't want to put $3 million, even if some of it's coming from water and sewer, which I did take the water and sewer costs out in, in email to Peg. It was still close to 1.8 million without water and sewer, if water and sewer are just funded strictly from enterprise accounts, which of course means that water and sewer rates go up.
And related to the tip, you had said that you, you didn't want to touch it until it was done with the tip. Maybe you could speak to that too.
Well, I just think that we, you know, we don't know the final design on that section of road at Hamilton of what we're going to meet. So sometimes it's nicer to know what you're meeting up to. That water line has to be upgraded on Hamilton in that area already. And maybe we do half of the project and we come back, but these other projects will provide immediate benefit without just getting half of a street done. So I, I think we will probably have to section off Hamilton Street and do it. But I still think that waiting till the tip is done and then tag teaming on to what has happened at the tip and breaking the project up in segments that way on Hamilton Street is probably the best method, especially since we do not know exact timing of the construction of the tip now. I know we're saying that we're thinking we're FY 24, but I also know that there is a definite potential, if other projects aren't ready and we're further along for us to move up. And I would, the last thing that we want is to be in construction on Hamilton Street for a CDBG project while the tip project is going on. That would really cause major traffic concerns. Anybody have any questions? For me?
Me, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
So everything looked good except the average. Now average, the River Street where the duck brothers of the company.
So I think you missed that slide when Peg presented it. We have to stop at the bridge because that is where that target area stops. So this project can only go from Crane to that bridge. So we did, we did go in front of the, in front of the business. It would go all the way to the bridge. It would be brand new water main. It won't be the side on the other side of the bridge. That would have to be a project in a different, when we, in a different project area. But this type target area being Crane to Main, we have to, we could, I guess Peg could try to explain that again. I think he missed it when you were here, Peg.
Yeah. Hi, Counselor Dow. So those two target areas, one is based on low to moderate income of national objectives. So we have to benefit low to moderate income residents in the blue. In the purple, we benefit, we tried to improve slum and blight. There was a survey done. And then the idea is you take all the things that showed up on the survey in fair or poor condition and you try to turn them around. So one, in the purple, we can't do subsurface improvements using that slum, slum blight national objective. So that's a hurdle for us. And then two, if we were to do both using CDBG funding and we were to figure out a way to be in the purple to work on the road, they would be considered two projects and we're only allowed three total. So that would be the bulk of the project. If that's the direction that the town wanted to go, we could try to think that through. But it, it gets complicated.
But meantime, you're going to go all the way to the bridge, correct?
So meantime, yeah, we go all the way as far as we can in the blue.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's a worse spot actually before the bridge, in front of the company. Soon you go down Crane Street, that's the worst spot right there. So that's good. And the bridge, you can't get funding from the state for the bridge?
We, we don't, the bridge doesn't need to be done in itself. The bridge is actually in the best condition of the whole road. We're really talking about the other side of the bridge. So we'll go to the bridge. The bridge is fine. That bridge itself doesn't need any work. It was worked on like 15, 20 years ago. It's probably one of our better bridges in town right now. But what we want to do is meet up to that good pavement and that, the good infrastructure that's already on the bridge. It's just that we can't go to the other side of the bridge, which is in bad condition too.
I mean, at least now you do the, the section before the bridge, that's a huge step right there. It's, it's very, you know, bad over there, actually, as you guys say. Thank you.
And Heather, you did say that, you know, it is obviously the town's intention to address the road on the other side. It's just not going to be at the same exact time as this.
Correct. There's other complicating factors that make that project on the other side extremely expensive. And we, as a town, we're definitely going to have to look into funding about who's retaining wall that is, if that is really the town's retaining wall, if we're going to have to take ownership, if it's not. There's some interesting looking property lines and without a whole property line survey, which has not been done, we basically just took responsibility to stabilize that retaining wall where it was failing, but the rest of it is showing degradation that it needs to be replaced. But we did stabilize the wall so that the road wouldn't fall in. And I know that road is in horrible condition. I would love to throw money at it, but you can't really put money on it until we do something permanently to fix that whole entire wall.
Thank you.
I want to comment again that we haven't gotten any feedback otherwise on preferences for the, the Hamilton versus Cross versus the, the River Crane, except what's been mentioned at the public hearings. So from what I have heard, it sounded like River Crane was a good direction to go. The redevelopment authority also addressed it at their meetings and thought that it sounded like River Crane. If, if that's what the DPW thought was a, a better choice for funding versus Cross Street, that they would be in support of that also. Although this is out of their purview, but you know, just as an interested body.
So I just want to bring up a couple of interesting points about this River Crane area. It is, has undersized piping in it. It's six inch piping. It's extremely old. It's from 1910s, some of the cards that we have. It also is disconnected. And what I mean by that is it's on part of Crane Street and it's on part of River Street and the two don't meet. So there isn't a clear flow path through the two. By doing this, we are looking to put new eight inch main in that whole area, which will service both the residents, the businesses, everybody better there for better pressures, better flows, better fire flows, all, all in general improvement for the whole system and how it actually functions.
Do we have any other comments about the water projects? No? Okay. Moving on.
The. If, if you guys don't have any other comments, I am going to mute myself here and listen into the Conservation Commission hearing because I was also supposed to be on that one. So I will try to pay attention. If you text me over on the side, I might see it. So thank you.
So with regards to how to choose the McCann Fields lighting and security improvements versus, for instance, the feasibility study for the transfer station, I'll have to consult with the Planning and Development Subcommittee as to what priorities they might see. The, I'll, I'll consult with Heather again about what she sees as priorities and the town manager. I, I believe that the feasibility study for the transfer station is probably the least likely of projects to be funded because again, it doesn't necessarily work very well into the timeline of trying to decide what the best future direction is. The reason it was being considered was because if the town wanted to use CDBG funding, it is required by DHC to have had a feasibility study. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for the fiscal year 21 application. I encourage anyone watching this, please call the Economic Development Department with feedback if you have comments about what you'd like to see these funds used for. And then we'll move on. I'm going to open up this second part of the hearing for the existing grant years. We have currently fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20, and the CDBG CV grants either in progress or opening up. Fiscal year 18, we're just in the midst of finishing up. The Central Street parking lot is done. And so we're just waiting to issue our last payment to our contractor to be able to close out the grant and submit all of our data, statistics, et cetera. With regards to the fiscal year 19, we're just getting into full swing. We were, we started work at the end of November on Main Street, as you are all fully aware. It's exciting to see the, the work getting done so quickly. We look forward to the job being completed by June of 2021. That's the bulk of our grant. We're also using those funds for our code enforcement positions, for commercial rehab. Commercial rehab, the first projects being done right now are at 22 Hamilton. He has multiple signs that are being furnished and installed that will help further improve the Central Street parking lot. And we're also looking at other potential commercial rehab projects along Central, the Central Street parking lot. With regards to the fiscal year 20, we are still waiting for the public announcement of the fiscal year 20 awards. That typically would have been announced in July. So we're now at this point, six months later than typically in the timeline of a grant. We're hoping that the awards are made public very soon so that we can tap those funds for administration. We're, we were getting tight on funds, but with the recent departure of the Economic Development Director in November and with the recent resignation of our administrative assistant, we actually have a little extra bit of funding. So we're doing okay there. With our Community Development Block Grant, CD, that is the coronavirus grant, we are actually finally releasing our first two awards as of the last day of the year. So on December 31st, we released our first two awards for micro enterprise assistance. We're happy to be doing that. And we look forward to spending down that money as quickly as possible thanks to the administration from the Quabog Valley CDC. They're processing the applications and approving those awards for the town to then pass through. We are then releasing the funds on their behalf. We encourage anyone who's looking for micro enterprise assistance, any small businesses of five or fewer employees and owner in total, who meets the 80% median income for Worcester area, to please contact the Quabog Valley CDC if you are trying to make yourself whole from any shortcomings due to the coronavirus COVID impacts. And with that, I have nothing else. I see that Counselor Adams is showing himself. Do you have any comments, Counselor?
Thank you, Peg, for everything. First of all, I appreciate it. And I'll, I'll touch bases with you on your PowerPoint slide. Is that on the website, on the town's website?
No, I'll, I'll be sure to put that up. I can put it up tonight.
Yeah, if not by the, by Monday, that'd be great. That way we could share that as well and then get a little bit more information, especially on those three projects.
Sure. And again, with a disclaimer that Heather's estimates are incredibly high level cost estimates that we don't want to hold her to.
Absolutely. Now with the CV, CDBG, so the two have been given. so the two have been given out, I believe at $10,000 each, that's 20,000.
Yes.
Quabog gets, Quabog Valley receives 15%, right? So we're about, spent is about $23,000 so far?
Correct.
Are there any other in the pipeline?
There are.
I don't even know names or anything.
No, there are 10 applications in the pipeline. But please get the word out. We'd love to be able to see this money spent as quickly as possible. We'd love to be able to help anybody who's struggling as a business that might be, you know, at their wits end. And if they've received other funding and they still were unable to be made whole, they still may be eligible for our funds.
I'll repost that then, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, okay. Any other comments, questions about our CDBG program? And how we are helping our low to moderate income residents or trying to change the, the conditions of some of our slum blight areas in town? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing for the current fiscal years, fiscal year 18, 19, 20, CDBGCV programs. And I'm going to thank everyone for attending our public hearing. Because the fiscal year 21 application has not been announced yet, we're going to go ahead and absolutely plan on having another hearing. I would assume maybe in another month and a half or so. Should we make any progress with the decisions around an urban renewal area project, that public hearing could come sooner. Thank you, have a good night.